All right, like call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Carol.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gateley.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Trustee comments? Discussion, Steve, anyone?
Thank you, Mayor. I know number one is our budget overview. This is the time of year where we have our draft budget being performed internally. Jason joined us right in the middle of the process last year. So it's the first year that he's been able to head it from start to finish, which I'm sure will be amazing for everybody. But he is going to take us through the overview of what we're looking at and the next meeting on the twentieth at the Committee of the Hold. That's when we'll actually be discussing the actual more in-depth budget of all the requests and whatnot from the departments. So this is just the overview of where we're at in the process.
All right, thank you. So tonight, I'm just gonna really quickly start here with our major revenues. So basically, the funding source for where this budget's gonna come from. I'm gonna start here with the these kind of six revenues I have laid out here within the general fund. And any given year, there's forty to fifty or so revenues, but we're looking at just these six revenues right here. Makes up nearly eighty-five to ninety percent of all the money that comes into the village's general fund. So really, I'm gonna start here with the top line, that sales tax and cannabis tax. We've seen some tremendous growth in this revenue line over the past few years. If you go back two years, that number was probably four point nine million dollars. Now you look at last year as up to just under seven point two million dollars. So it's gone up significantly with because of the three percent cannabis tax and just really the way things have gone with just the cost of everything going up, you know, the way auto sales went. Going into this current year budget, we didn't know how much of that was sustainable or not. So as you see, we budgeted six point five million dollars to come in this year. Right now, looking at the way things are going through this year, I'm kind of putting that number at just under seven point one million dollars. So it's gonna probably come in a little below where we're at last year, but significantly above where we thought it was gonna be this year. So things didn't quite cool off as much as we thought. But then again, going forward, preliminary projections for this upcoming year, just over six point nine million dollars. So again, based on everything that's going on within the market right now, interest rates going up, they're trying to slow down how much people are spending, the cost of everything going up. We're just kind of, you know, cushioning for is there, if there's gonna be a slowdown, we're gonna say maybe sales tax might come back a little bit. And really, a lot of the other major revenues we're projecting, just kind of coming back to maybe normal a little bit, not quite what they've been these past couple of years, just leave ourselves some room, just in case, like I mentioned, things come backwards. So the next piece of it I want to get into is personnel, since personnel is usually one of the biggest pieces of the budget. So if you remember back in July of last year, the village contracted with Gov HR to basically do a non-union salary and classification study. Really, what this focused on is is taking a look at all the non-union positions, looking at the job descriptions, interview, you know, interviewing the very staff, learning about what people do, and then comparing that to what our comparables out in the market do. So what we really did is Gov HR kind of has a formula to come figure out what our top twenty comparables are. So they look at things like population, number of full-time equivalents, what our EAV is, what our sales tax is. They try to say who are the top twenty out there that are most like the village of North Aurora. And then to kind of take us that a step further, what we asked them to do is we said, can you also create a second kind of comparable list for us and pull in St. Charles, Geneva, Batavia, Sugar Grove, Yorkville, Oswego. So basically, everybody around us. So we have kind of two, two data points for us to compare everything to. And then one additional thing we asked with what to ask them to look at was the hours work. So basically, what are people's lunch breaks and and do they ever get any break periods? And so we may bring something back when we have personnel updates and look at, you know, kind of what our hours are. You know, there's this room for like a break period. So really, what we did was we used all that information to kind of relook at our, our current classification scale. And what that focused on was taking those two, that those two groups of data and say, we want to be in the fiftieth percentile, you know, of these positions of basically what our comparables are. So if there, if we weren't quite at what the fiftieth percentile is for all ours, we said, we're gonna bring those, those positions up to basically be at the fiftieth percentile. And then we kind of surveyed what are our comparables doing for a cost of living adjustment at the beginning of the year. A lot of people were in that four percent range for what they're gonna do for this next coming year. So we said, we want to bring people to the fiftieth percentile, and then just assume most everybody's gonna kind of go up from there. So apply a four percent onto that. So here's kind of the results of, of where we came back from. And I'm gonna get this laser, laser pointer on here. So really, our old grade broke the positions down into eleven. So here's our old one. The new scale, we essentially have twelve grades. And really, the new one right here is this, what is now called grade eight, which I'll get into that one in a little bit as to why that one is broken out specifically. Here's our current range of all these positions. And here's the proposed ranges. And you're gonna see some big numbers here on these top of grades, especially down here, ten point nine, thirteen percent. I just want to point out, this doesn't mean anybody's gonna get a ten percent or eleven percent. All this means is the tops have gone up that much. So for example, if I were, you know, in a grade three and say I was a step ten maxed out, I'm not gonna stay a step ten and get a ten percent raise. It just means now that the scales are gonna move a little bit. So I might have gone from a step ten to a step seven. So I'm gonna, I might go actually go back down to where my raise is probably gonna be in that four percent range. So just because somebody was where they're at in the old position in the old skill, doesn't mean they're gonna stay that way. And they're gonna be getting and or seeing a lot of these, these percent increases that I have shown here. Kind of our goal was to be right in that essentially place people to where they're gonna be right in that like kind of four percent range, as we mentioned, our cost of living we're looking at. And really, what the results showed us is if you look at up here, these directors and senior manager positions, like just over four percent. So that basically means we were right at the market, maybe a hair slight market adjustment, but then apply that four percent we mentioned down in this advanced technical. You see some of the sixes. So that means we're probably a little under where we, where we are compared to our comparables. But then really, the big adjustments are down here in these administrative and technical positions where, you know, we saw we were pretty far under market for a lot of these positions comparative to what are some of our top twenty or our locals are at. So those had a fairly significant market adjustment. But again, like I mentioned, people aren't gonna be seeing that like right off the bat. That's just gonna be essentially moving them back down and giving them room to grow going into the future. So during last year's budget process, we mentioned that we'd likely be coming back during this budget period to kind of address a few different things we were looking at, one of them being human resources, administrative help within the police department, code enforcement, and then economic development. At the last mid-year review back in January, you know, I mentioned, we made mention if we had a plan that we're looking to kind of address these items, and it would add about one point three full-time equivalents to the budget. We've been kind of going back and forth a lot of things over these past couple of months. And we, that updated plan now adds basically one point five positions or two point zero three FTEs, which I'm gonna go through in a minute. So essentially, what this, this updated restructure plan is, is it's creating a business and administrative services manager. The primary focus on this position is economic development, something that is really laid out within the strategic plan of the village. Some additional duties you would do is helping assisting the village administrator with policy review and development, assisting with long-term strategic planning. So this is really an admin department, economic development position. In addition, the executive assistant title changes becomes a community and board relations coordinator. So really, what this does is takes elements of the deputy clerk role, but focuses more on event planning, community outreach, communication roles. And it shifts some of the, some of the current duties, you know, business registration and license back to that position I mentioned, that business and administrative services manager. Because we're adding now more on the administrative side, that administrative assistant position, some of those duties get pulled off there. And that actually gets shifted over to the police department now, as we mentioned, administrative help on the police department. So now the police department would have a management analyst, which was the former administrative analyst on, on the admin side. So they'd be helping with a lot of departmental policy creation, implementation, recording some required law training, searching for grant opportunities to, you know, to get awarded for the police department, and then really assisting the department with some long-term planning, goal setting, and strategic initiatives. One of those plans we've mentioned, human resources. We currently are accounting and finance manager does kind of like are kind of our de facto HR person, but really, it's kind of secondary work. So what we want to do is we want to take a more proactive approach on the human resources position. So basically, having somebody that monitors employee training, monitoring whether or not evaluations are being done, maybe do some of those in-house studies that I mentioned with salary stuff, we could do that in-house now. You know, proactively managing job descriptions. So because that person is gonna be taking more of an HR role, we want to free up some of the time that they spend kind of assisting with a front counter, front reception, because they kind of serve as our, you know, our second in line, our third in line to, you know, answering phones, taking people up at the front. We have a part-time, kind of payable specialist, about twenty-seven hours a week. So what we're looking to do is make that person full-time employee so that they're all, they're all the time to basically serve as the direct backup to answering calls, helping people come to the counter. But with those additional hours, we're gonna give them more work with taking like the accounts receivable function away from another employee too, just to maybe to give them some extra work to fill in those extra hours. And then the last thing we're looking to do is create a part-time community service officer. This would be about twenty-eight hours a week. Some of the duties at that position will be looking at enforcing animal control ordinances, code enforcement, which I mentioned earlier, things we want to look at, this person would, would, would be on the road looking for things like that. Working special events and other non-emergency requests for services. So again, all, all of these either new positions or restructuring position would create just over two, two point zero three full-time equivalents to the authorized position. The total estimated budget impacted of that with salary, payroll taxes, benefits, insurance, everything, two hundred and one thousand dollars.
How sustainable is it now that we're looking to expand staff and add more staff and it's gonna be two hundred and one thousand a year? I was looking at our revenue sources and a considerable amount comes from sales tax revenue, correct?
Yep.
And considerable, considerable part of that is from cannabis. And I just worry with cannabis, you know, the market getting saturated, all these new dispensaries opening in the area. How would we be, would be still be in good shape if we did see the sales tax revenue decline?
Yeah, and I'm, I was gonna touch on that a little bit later, but you know, the cannabis has been slowing down, like you're, you're right, like from when it first came online to the village, it has been decreasing and going down. It makes up, I probably can't say exactly how much it makes up, but it's, it's a decent amount, but not a significant, I mean, it just, it doesn't drive when I mentioned sales tax a couple of years ago, it's four point nine million dollars, and now it's over seven. All that's not from, from cannabis tax. A lot of that is, you know, woodmans, car dealerships and things like that. So as that has been going down, it's not gonna have a significant impact on, on the sales tax revenue.
You know, I, when we go through this, last time we were here, I had all of these requests for people and I said, it was too many, you know, sometimes you just get that feeling like if I bring this to the board, they're gonna look at him and be like, Steve, why are you bringing like seventy-five people to the board? I mean, it's a lot of people here. So we said we bring it back mid-year and we did. Mid-year, we talked for the last couple of months on ways to lessen the impact to the village. Fortunately, we do actually have staff that are in similar positions now. What's, when you compare to other villages in this area, we're one of the only towns, if not the only town that I think only one other town doesn't have an administrative person of some degree in the police department. A lot of the towns have economic development or some form of economic development. Most, if not all, have some form of HR, designated person for human resources. We do have seventy employees now. So when you start looking, you say, okay, well, we need these things, but how do we make it cost effective? The other thing we're taking on, and it'll be in the next newsletter, is we're doing ten plus events between the village hall, public works and, and police in the community now. And Chris, who's our analyst and, and the admin department, she's actually coordinates most of the special events. And this here, and I know it's complicated, so every one of these positions in a way pulls from each other. So they're all kind of interconnected in a way that we took something from somebody and then moved that person somewhere else and then filled that void with something. So I'm gonna go over this really quickly because there was a lot to go over. But the most, the newest and only true first-time position, full-time position is the first one, business and administrative services manager. Don't want it to come off like we're admin heavy because we only have one person that assists me directly with admin, and that's our administrative analyst. They wouldn't move to the police department and work in the police department full-time. This position would be a combined economic development position, which is really one of the largest driving forces in our strategic plan every single time we do it. This is someone who would be dedicated not only to business retention, business recruitment efforts, but also we would be looking because of the administrative background, they'd be working on high-level administrative projects with me like the strategic plan, like resident complaints or issues that are escalated. But one of the aspects that I liked is we created this job to also include corridor management, which is something unique. We're looking for a candidate that has that administrative background and economic development background, who can look at our corridors like Randall Road, Route thirty-one Orchard, and actually the town center and look at those areas and say, okay, I'm gonna build an economic development plan for these areas, and I'm actually going to oversee it and coordinate with public works, infrastructure projects and whatnot to see these things go through. So that was that unique position. And I think if we were to go live with that, I think you get a lot of good candidates, possibly internal, but external for sure because of the uniqueness of it. And you probably get someone with either a community development or a master's in public administration or some type of, of planning background for that position. As far as the executive assistant, she is in charge right now of all of our website, all of our newsletter. She's in charge of our social media. The police does their social media and they started coordinating back and forth with village hall on, on, on recent things over the last few months. But eventually, that position would then take over all special events would be primarily under that person. Then all media, press releases, everything would be focused under one person with the assistance of the police department. Chris goes over to the police department, helps them with things like formulating their budget, creating policies internally, updating research on things that they don't have the time for their officers that are doing on the street right now. She would be assisting with all that administrative role. The, as we said before, we have somebody that does benefits coordination, but they really do a little bit more than benefits coordination. And as we started going through this process, we realized how much HR she was already doing. And so when we were trying to look at her title and actually justify to what it was, she was basically as much finance as she was HR. So we decided to just say, you know what, she knows everything and she's been in our representative on a lot of the HR functions already. Let's make her our HR designee. And then to make that focus, we'll take a little bit of her finance that she oversees in the, in the area out front by the lobby. And we'll actually give that to our part-timer who's been here for six years and she works twenty-eight hours a week on average, make her full-time and actually take some of that responsibilities and helping out at the counter more because she'll be here more often. So everything, like I said, is intertwined. Now, the community service officer also knew something we've talked about in the past, part-time position, code enforcement at night, sure, when we don't have our code enforcement off, but also it's to relieve the officers of some of the mundane tasks that they're doing on shift when that person's there. Things that you wouldn't want necessarily your officer who's patrolling to have to stop and do such as a lockout or something like that, or a, a small fender bender when you just need someone to block the road for a second, you know, for an hour until the tow truck gets there. And normally, we'd have our squad cars sit there. Now you're talking about a community service officer, if they're there, park a squad there and just make sure the scene is safe while everyone else is patrolling. Real complicated, but ultimately, when we looked at the finances of it, if it wasn't for the fact that we needed the positions and we've had surpluses in the amounts that we've had, plus Jason's gonna go over our, our budget projections for next year. You're talking about the fact that our general fund, we budget a transfer every year of six hundred thousand dollars from general to capital just because we can. So, and that's always our quote-unquote backup in case we need it. But that's also used right now going to the capital projects like possibly our public works facility that we need as well.
Just back to your point, though, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with the structure restructuring of the positions. I am a little concerned about the amount of the salary increases for these positions. I mean, you talk about a four percent increase and you're comparing to other villages and municipalities. I, I think that's the wrong comparison. I think we should be comparing to the private sector because I can tell you in the private sector in the last two years, people haven't gotten four percent increases. And when you have a budget that outlines all of these public sector employees that are getting automatic increases regardless of what the economy is doing every single year. If you compared it to the private sector, those jobs, no matter where we are on the spectrum are pretty, pretty desirable because you get a pension, you get, you get jobs. And I, I don't really care what Batavia or Sugar Grove or, or Elburn does. I think we should be concerned regardless of what our surplus is with making sure that the salaries that we're paying our employees are in line with what others people in the village are, what they would expect to see for that same type of a job. And I'm not saying, our, our staff works very hard and I appreciate that. So I'm not trying, I'm just saying we have to, I, I think, be cognizant that the public sector has, has done very well in more recently than the private sector, and I think we have to be aware of that.
And I, and I do appreciate that. And when we go back and forward, we do take a look at that. Now, the reason of the four percent, this is the highest CPI that we've had a cola increase since I've been here. And you look back at, and I know inflation is high. And so of course, you know, other people are saying, well, you know what, just because it's seven percent, six percent, you know, and everyone's getting seven percent or six percent. Some people are getting zero, some people are getting one percent. There were a lot of years that we had one, one and a half, two percent increases. When we, the reason that you're probably seeing the four more this year, last year when it was seven percent CPI, we asked for a three percent cola for our staff. We happen to do the salary study this year. And the goal of that salary study was just to take our best comparables in the marketplace in order to recruit and retain, because as you, as you know, it's, it's been hard to get employees nowadays in certain positions. The, the goal was fifty percent. So not to be at the highest of the comparables or the lowest, it was to be in the middle of our comparables. And when we contacted some of the towns, four percent is what we're hearing, some of the towns are going at three and four percents. So to stay, if you're gonna implement a salary study, then in order to stay in that middle of the comparable range, you kind of have to use that basis that everyone else is gonna be, if we're gonna be in the fifty percentile, fifty to sixty percent, we gotta actually increase where they're increasing this year. But I do understand where you're coming from. The other thing is internal equity issues. We had three collective bargaining agreements. Some of them are in the high twos this year because they were bargaining for before. One of them's for this year. So you look at that and say, okay, in other years, where have we been in comparison to the collective bargaining units? So it does seem a little high this year, but I think it's also because we are implementing the salary study.
So I got a question, trustee Carol, which one of these restructures do you think is paid too high, all of them or just certain ones or?
Can you go back to the slide?
Uh, you don't if I actually go forward, one. So, so part of what we, we did is I mentioned, we had that salary study. And we'll kind of bogged it down a little bit or made it take longer than we thought is we had all these ideas of these restructured positions, new positions. So we had to ask Gov HR to say, you know, we're thinking this position, can you also add this and go out there and see, does anybody else have a similar type position you can give us to what a comparable is? So we can actually figure out what is the starting point for where these positions go. So we mentioned these positions, the business administrative manager would be a proposed grade eight, so eighty-seven, nine to one twenty-five, one oh nine. Police management analyst would basically be the same thing as the admin analyst, community and board relations would be our new grade five, maxing out at ninety-one. And then the community service would basically be right at our, our bottom step, grade one. And again, that would be a part-time position. So the salary would be basically half of that.
And I can look it up right now, but once, and I'm glad Jason's clarifying it. So these are really the only restructure positions these four. And when you're looking at it, our business administrative services would be a brand-new position. We, once again, when you're looking at, the markets changed from when I, when I started. They used to have a title assistant to the village administrator, and we're not seeing many of those anymore. We're seeing more of just straight what they call analysts. We have one on staff already. That was one where we saw was the most significant difference in what we're paying them versus what the market's paying for. That was one of them. So that would become the police management analyst. But that first one is a brand-new position, and we came up with that dollar amount given the fact that we compared economic development people, which typically make somewhere in our comparable worlds, you're talking about low one hundreds, one tens in that range. And then you're adding, you're not finding someone who just knows how to actually go out and, and do things. Economic development wise, you have to find someone who actually has a background education for administration because with Chris going to the police department, I need someone else to assist in the village hall with policymaking, strategic planning, all of those things that we do every day. So that's why that's beefed up a little bit because you have to recruit somebody who's got a strong background in both finance, I'm sorry, economic development and admin.
I'd like to, I'd like to go back to that slide, Jason, with the four percent, because there was one position on there that had sixteen point eight percent increase, and I'd like to have an explanation for that.
Yeah, that, that's the new one that I mentioned, how was the, the previous finance and accounting manager was in that grade seven and with the accounts receipt, account, or I mean, I'm sorry, human resources added on to it. You know, one of the comparables we got, and I, I can't remember if it was Lockport, but somebody essentially had a assistant finance director slash HR manager type position. So we had one comparable out there that we were able to say, this is kind of where, where that one is showing or what we're seeing out there. So it's essentially a bump up, upgraded position by adding the, all those, those human resources elements to it.
And the hardest thing to, to, when you're proposing a restructure like this, I think we took pride in the fact that we created a solution that we, when you talk about two hundred thousand dollars, you have to look at what it would cost if we were actually gonna hire each of these positions by themselves. And you're talking three hundred plus if you're actually hiring these positions to work full-time for the village. So we did actually, this took a long time to actually get it to what we consider to be a cost-effective way to do it. But the problem with that is, is when you do something like that, you're kind of breaking the mold. There aren't comparables in other communities for these positions because we created these positions uniquely in order to make it financially solvent.
Yeah, and if you factor in like projecting for the future in terms of like that two hundred thousands this year, but what about going forward? I always like to pay attention to the long-term impact as well. Did you factor that into your calculations when you?
Yeah, when you're looking at the, the maximums, those are the current maximums. And yes, they will go up with cola and whatnot over time, but those are the maximums. Once again, it doesn't mean the people being hired or in those positions are starting at that. That's just the highest of the range.
Right. I understand that, Steve. But I was just wondering how did you project income as well into the future for several years? That's what my question is.
Yeah, and one, and one thing you'll see differently when we, when you actually receive the, the budget documents here is I wanted to add some sections in there where we take all the funds and we try to project them out five, like five years at a time. So you know, with the general fund and all these, these positions worked in there, there will be schedules in there that'll show you, here's the current year budget year, and just if everything went up, you know, two percent, cost of, you know, goods and services, everything went up two, three percent a year for the next five years, kind of here's where we'd be at. Here's our fund balance, here's our income, our, our gains and losses. So I dropped the numbers in, everything looks good and you'll, you'll be able to see it once you get the budget document out there and, and so that is something we did look at, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, as we, we mentioned a lot of this too, but you know, the restructuring just allows us to, to focus on some key areas, you know, like we said, a lot of these things are currently being done, but they're really secondary function. So this, these restructure, these new positions really just allows us to dedicate more time to, to really doing those strategic plan, you know, we, we mentioned economic development was a big one within there, you know, reaching out to the community, more community events. So this gets us to be able to do a lot more of those things and focus on them. And we mentioned the budget impacts is, is sustainable, you know. Steve mentioned we, every year we budget about a six hundred thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. I think the three, last three years combined, that's been well over six million dollars. And especially this current year, again, we budgeted a six hundred thousand dollar, and we're looking at the surplus again to be two, two and a half million dollars. So we, we're, our revenues within the general fund are way outpacing our expenditures to the point where it's gonna be now eight million dollars probably plus over the next last four years of just extra surplus money within our general fund that's getting pushed over to the capital fund. So we, we think this is something that is sustainable. We can, we can afford it with the current revenues, the way things are, because we just had such, such a cushion on the revenue side that has allowed us to to really build up that capital balance. And there are two other positions that basically are new and they're under consideration. The first one being an additional public works street, streets laborer. And then the second one being a public works water labor. So the water labor obviously paid out of the water fund with water service fees. And I believe we mentioned that back when we were talking water rates back in January. So here's just a quick breakdown by department of those staffing changes. Total change would be four point zero three total full-time equivalents. So we have a point three three in the admin finance, which is basically that part-time accounts payable clerk going from part-time to full-time. So the point three three brings her up to a one. And the police, that would be a one point zero for the, the management analyst coming over there, plus a point seven for that part-time community service. And then the public works and water, that's the one for those two labor positions I mentioned. And then just a quick breakdown of how that all adds up. So all the impact of everything I mentioned, those new positions, the restructure, everything, a total of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, broken down by three forty, eight twenty-five in the general fund, eighty-six, seven, seven, five in the water fund. Three forty, eight twenty five in the general fund, eighty six, seven, seven, five in the water fund. So let's salary benefits, every, everything all in. Uh, just to break down again, that new salary plan I mentioned. Accounts for 52,500 of an increase and that's fifty to 2,000 increase. Over, if we just said, everything is status quo, we're not moving things around, we're not changing, just apply a four percent on there. This new plan would be fifty two, five more than just going straight status quo with a, a, a simple cola increase. Um, I mentioned earlier, those restructured positions, 201,000, and then those two new positions, labor positions, one seventy four, one hundred. So that's. That's assuming they started about, I think, a step two or three, you know, maybe we'll find somebody who's got a little bit of experience within them. Um, and I mentioned earlier, six point seven million of capital transfers over the last three years, another two point five million projected this year. So. You know, general fund is, is doing well and has been doing well and should be able to, uh, you know, pay for these, these additional positions we mentioned. Uh, quickly, some additional personnel assumptions on the union side, public works, two point seven five percent. Cola, police sergeants, two point seven five, and the police officers of four percent come June first. Um, we are seeing increases on the medical side for our HMO, uh, that's projected to go up nine point five percent. But the PPO is only a point two percent increase. And on the dental side, our HMO plan, actually no increase. And then the PPO plan is actually a six percent. Um, IMRF for our, our non-public safety employees, nine point zero percent is our current year. I'm roughed it have some, uh, investment losses. So we are, we are thinking that the next year's rate is going to go up 12% is, is just a very conservative estimate on ours. It's probably going to be less than that, but we, we should see an increase on the IMRF side for, just because of how the investments did last year. And then quickly, I'm just going to highlight some, some budget requests that are in, um, currently. Um, installing lighting on the village welcome signs, um, document imaging. So basically. Having somebody come in and all our invoices, you know, everything, all the paper we have, just really scanning those things and getting them all electronic. Um, we do have the Genesis dealership will probably come online shortly. So we will see an increase in the sales tax rebates we give out, but then obviously that's going to be additional sales tax money coming in for those car sales. Uh, police pension contributions are going to go up just over $200,000 to 1,652,000. Vehicle equipment charges about 504,000. Um, we are seeing an increase just because of the cost of vehicles, however, things are going up and the fleet is really, has been growing. So there's going to be some additional, uh, charges there. We have our police department debt transfer. So that's basically the alternate revenue. So that's the, the sales tax money that goes over to pay for that debt, 627,000. And even though with all those, those positions we talked about. Um, with the way all our revenue projections, projections are going, we still project there to be a five to $600,000 capital transfer. Within this budget, even with those new positions. So, um. Just to show you that those new positions, we think are, are affordable within the current budget, and we still have that room to make those capital transfers going forward. And the capital projects funds and the TIFs, um, we have a 1.9 million dollar budget for that 2023 annual road program. Uh, we have some additional, you know, engineering, design, construction, management costs of 1.5 million for the public works facility. And then the Tanner, uh, storm sewer improvements, 1.4 million. Um, on the route thirty one TIF side, we probably will make an, another transfer out of that fund into the United TIF fund, just to fund a lot of those, those. You know, things going on within there, whether it be property purchases, like I mentioned, uh, route thirty one airport road intersection. Um, so there's a lot going on, on the, uh, United TIF that we're going to have to continue to pull money over to fund some of those projects. On the water fund, uh, we mentioned there's likely to be a 15% rate increase, uh, effective June first. We'll probably bring an ordinance back here shortly, um, to kind of get, to get that, uh, moving. Um, we do have a, a plan for the water master plan. Um, so that basically just looks at everything within the water fund, gives us an update on. You know, what is the, how are the, the treatment plans? How are the wells? Uh, what capital should we, should we really be focusing on? Should we? You know, we put a plan together now, but it'll kind of really look at is, is our plan, um, up to date and, and probably in the order it should be. Um, we do have a lot of capital within the water fund plan this current year. Um, SCADA system upgrade, well, six improvements, various, uh, water treatment plan improvements, uh, both on the east and the west. Um, some water main replacements, including a Fox River crossing, um, doing one of the three of those this, this next year. And on the vehicle and equipment fund. There's a lot of vehicle purchases, but as you see my notes here, um, a lot of these are things that are on order now. And we just haven't received yet, so we're going to have to carry that budget over. So essentially that's money that went, is going to go unspent this year and just kind of back into the reserve. And then we're just going to re, essentially rebudget it for next year. So. Those top ones, those three police, four explorers, those things are, have been on order, but likely won't receive them this year and we'll just have to re-carry them over along with. Kind of the, the four vehicles that will be next on rotation cycle, uh, for those. Um, some public works, uh, trucks, a dump truck, uh, a new snowplow, uh, $350,000. And then. That last one on that, that water, um, that van. Originally we had a plan to replace that van. This is a van that holds a lot of equipment. Anytime there's something big going out, they would send, send this van out. Um, but then adding that new labor position, we're also looking at basically replacing that van and another truck. We came up with the idea of rather than replacing two vehicles, we're just going to do essentially one enclosed service truck. Um, to basically, that would be somebody's everyday driving truck to, to go. But then on top of that, we're going to retrofit another truck. So basically they'd have a duplicate, they had two, two enclosed trucks to be able to send out, to have all these things rather than just. You know, buying one specialty vehicle that's just going to kind of sit and use as needed. Now we're going to have two trucks out there that would basically do the same thing that everybody would be driving, you know, every day. And then the water, uh, department is also requesting a backhoe loader.
Hey Jason, I have a quick question. Um, maybe it's for the chief. It seems like we've bought a lot of new cruisers lately. What's the average lifespan of a, of a explorer?
Well, Jason, what were we at? Seventy-five thousand miles?
Yeah, I think, I think what I was told during this process and, and way it seems it's been is I think it was the. So patrol four years and then like the administrative detective, like, like on a seven-year rotation. So. The patrol vehicles do get used a lot. They're just constant, you know, constantly running. So those.
We bought three last year. We want to buy four this year. It just seems like every time we do the budget, there's new police cars being bought. I mean, are, is there any reason why we need so, so many? Are we under, uh, underutilized with?
No, it's on the, we have 12 in our fleet, two officers share. So basically. Four days a week is going 24 hours a day. Um, and the other week is three days a week. It's going 24 hours a day. The sergeant's car, we only have one. So that's driven basically every day currently. Um, so. It's just coming up this year. I believe in the next two years, we have one just being replaced.
Um, there, there, there is a lot. And I, I think like, so I think we're just in that point of the rotation cycle to where. You know, we've got it laid out over the next couple of years. There's going to be years where there's maybe one, one or two, um, you know, upper replacements. I think we're just in that cycle right now where. A lot's just coming up and then we're going to get, have some light years upcoming here.
Thank you.
And then just some other things to kind of keep in mind and we're, we're looking at is, you know, I mentioned. The general fund's going to have a surplus this year of probably well over two, two and a half million dollars. And. Do we keep following the same, um, way we've been doing the last few years is just pushing that money over to the capital projects fund and building up that capital, uh, fund balance? Or do we look at the police pension fund? You know, we've had. These, these recommended contributions as we get closer to that, that 2040, uh, funding year. Is going up, do we, do we look at some of that, uh, additional money and say, you know, we're going to make some extra payments, you know, to the police pension fund to try to get a whole. You know, get that under wraps, you can get our, our funding rate, um, a little higher. Um, so we're, we're kind of looking at that. Right now and trying to determine what the best use of those surpluses are. Um, another thing we need to kind of consider is obligating and using those, uh, recovery act funds. So the village had 2.4 million dollars. I think originally we said. Lead service line. You know, frankly, I, I don't know if the lead service line i- is going to line up with ARPA, the timeframe. So. The best thing might be just doing is, is obligating it to the water fund for, you know, just general capital and some, a lot of those projects I mentioned, we're just essentially using that ARPA fund. Now, and freeing up funds for the later, for when we actually get around to doing those lead service lines. So. You know, we're just using it for water capital, whether it's current capital or future capital. It's just, it's going to be going into the water.
I just, I just want to point something out that we've got this surplus that we're able to do all of this with, and we've kept our property taxes frozen. So I think that needs to be something we need to be aware of as the board of that, you know, do we really need to keep these increases on taxes when we've got surpluses and we're funding the village well? But on the other hand, I also think we need to, as staff, keep in mind that just because we have the money, we shouldn't be spending it in the short term. So I, just like us, you know, as a board, I'm very proud that we were able to freeze the taxes. We still have a surplus. And we're, we're, you know, getting, addressing the needs of the village, but I think we need to keep in mind that just because we have it, we shouldn't be spending it. And if we have this surplus, it's not our money. And we need to be aware of that when we're talking about property tax, that's another, other driver of the income to the village.
Yeah. I think, I think that's always true, right? I think that. Um, as a government body, we should always be cognizant that we're not spending our money. This money is taxpayers' money. However, I, I feel like. Uh, all the, I feel like the positions, uh, were very well thought out, thoughtful with. Combining as much as you could to get as much for the taxpayers' dollar as possible. And it sounds to me. Like there's a lot of positions that were sort of. You know, scrambling to get the work done in a way. And now we've, you've created a way that I think was thoughtful. That gets, moves the village forward in a more professional way, a more, uh, sort of. Uh, covering the things that really need to be done and done well. That's my opinion about the way you structured the, the salaries. Um, and no, you shouldn't just spend it because you have it, but I feel like you've gone to great lengths. To minimize the budget impact to, to keep it as low as possible. Uh, I just think that for me, I feel like it's been done thoughtfully and I agree with the way that it has been, what's been presented here.
I want to piggyback on that. Um. I don't feel at all with staff. I don't think you spend money because we have it. I know I've been through a lot of the budget process and sit through a lot of meetings and. I know they painstakingly to get the two point three people, they crafted and were, um, it was just cool how they. Overlap some of these jobs and were able to move people around to save taxpayer money and to get the, um. Biggest impact for the, the community, you know, people are, it's not 1970s anymore. People expect. Lot of things out of this village. They're calling constantly. We have a small staff, 20,000 people. Um. Yeah, I've told trust and, um. What you guys do. And like I said, um, Steve and the staff, they're always looking ways to save money. And I, I definitely don't feel that they're, uh. Looking to spend just because they got it. Um, a lot of our equipment is old, 15, 20 years old because of the boards in the past, and which is good. We want them to be frugal, which I think we're, can be proud of, but you know, things do need to be purchased. Um. Like I said, community service officer, what a great idea, you know, towns have been having those for 20, 30 years, you know, and we're finally catching up to that. And they're going to have them do code enforcement. How good is that? Another way to, um. Overlap and, and, uh, spend money wisely. So I think that this is great. I think, um. You know, good community and, um, you know, people expect this stuff. So, but you know, thank you.
Yeah, actually, uh, so I've been on the board about two years now and the whole time I've been on the board, the staff's been talking about adding, um. Adding these positions and it's, it's been two years to make sure that I think, um, you're doing it responsibly. So. Um, I'm personally, I'm excited about having another, uh, economic development, um, staff person. Um, I think that is. Probably the number one thing that I hear from our residents is when are we going to get more stuff in town? Um, and I'm, I'm. Assuming and hoping that will, that will assist with that. Um, and for, to, to add. Again, those essentially, well, one new position and three restructured is the way I'm understanding it. For 200,000, I guess, I mean, that's, that's pretty reasonable in my, in my book. So, um. I agree. I think, uh. I, I think that part of this whole presentation is pretty much a no-brainer. And then I think that the rest of the stuff, as far as the, the equipment and everything is just. Timing, like, like, like Jason said, I think, uh, I mean, I mean, we're talking, you know, items, you know. Earlier, we, we approved, uh, I know this bucket truck, you know, 23-year-old piece of equipment and stuff like that. I mean, I think we're just. I agree. I think we're hitting just that time where a lot of stuff has to get done. So, um. You know, we can afford it. I, I trust our staff is being very responsible myself. So I like everything here.
I don't know how you possibly could be opposed to four police cars. When police cars are, they have to run, they have to be sharp, they have to run and they run fast, then they, they get. They put a lot of wear and tear on it. There's a big budget item and we need police cars. That's just part of what our duty is. To make sure that people are safe. So everything's fine.
I, I, I would say, I, I agree. I echo what everybody said. I, I would say with regard to this last slide. I mean, we've, I think almost every year that we've had a surplus, we've added additional to the police pension. I definitely like to see that. Um, and then with, uh, uh, remainder going to the capital projects. I think that's a good use of our money. We have a lot of capital projects that are coming up in the next years that we've talked about in the past. And I think that that's, uh. A wise use of the taxpayers' money. The ARPA funds, I, I think your recommendation that it go into the general water fund. Is, is a good one. That way we don't miss the timing of the lead, lead. Uh, replacement.
Yeah, I would just, um, like to say one thing, I, the board has always been very supportive. I've been here going on 10 years soon and. The staff and the board have always had a good relationship going back and forth and, and positive budget conversations. Um. Jason's addition has been, has been great. And looking at ARPA. We came back and we looked at lead service lines, but as Jason said, the timing might not make sense. We never obligated it officially, which is purposely because we were trying to see where our lead inventory was going. At this time, we are planning to bring it back to obligate it to general capital soon in the water fund. Um, but it's, I will tell you that the inventory, I, I talked to John this morning about it and we have had over 500 responses, which is. Which is good. It's not half yet, but it's almost half. And so far, the number of lead is very small. Very small. So that's very positive so far. So that's good. Um, as far as the surpluses that we've had in the past, uh, trustee Carol. We, we've actually not added a lot into our general fund. We have had a tradition. That when we have the surpluses, we tend to put, um, a bunch into capital and, and some, or, or we have done, uh, a bunch to the police pension. The capitals, really the public works facility, that's going to be the next thing for Jason. And I sit down and, and. We have a working number that we're working on, but it's a large number for a building that size. So the key was. How do you keep doing? We have a great streets program. So that's why we make that additional transfer into capital. So we can do a ton of roads every year. But we really are looking at the public works facility and saying, okay, how much are we going to have to borrow? To keep our, our rates down, our debt down. So we don't have to worry about, you know, having, uh, the, the tax burden as well. So. That's been, that's the next upcoming thing. And that's one of the reasons why we have been looking at the capital fund for the last few years.
Actually, one other question I forgot, um, how often is the salary study done? Has it been done? Recently?
It was the first time, I think it's early two thousands, maybe? Remember what I remember seeing last?
I'm going to say, or, uh, mid two thousands was the last time they had it professionally done. In the past, uh, what it would be is, uh, basically the finance director would look at the positions periodically during the budget cycle. Just kind of look at some of the towns around us and see where we're at. This is the first time that in a long time, like 15 plus years. That we decided to have a more comprehensive one, given the fact that. Recruiting for positions. Not every position. I want to make that clear. We're not, we're not having a sob story like it's impossible to fill employees. Some positions very difficult. Um, the examples when we tried to hire, hire our civil engineer and how hard that was to find somebody. In that role. And one of the things we wanted to make sure is that we're at least offering competitive. And to your point, trustee Carol, what a civil engineer might be making in the private sector in order to recruit them here.
All good. So the last item I just wanted to touch on really quick is, is Steve mentioned is that funding source for the public works facility. Um, when the budget comes out. There's not going to be any construction costs included yet for that public works facility, because you know, we're still trying to figure out. You know, how we're going to fund it, what the, what the total cost is going to be. So once all those things kind of get figured out. Likely what's going to happen is we'll come back this year, once the board finally says, you know, yes to it, i- i- if you decide on something. And we'll have a budget amendment essentially creating, you know, a new. Public works facility, capital projects funds that we put it, you know, we'll figure out the funding source. So. As far as the construction, it goes in and out, i- i- you're not going to see it in the budget until we actually kind of settle on something. And then once we do that, it's all going to kind of get put in. In its own separate funds. We can track exactly how much that building costs.
I don't want to keep everybody here, but I'm going to say one more thing about the vehicle and equipment fund. I was proud of the fact that when we met with the public works department about the vehicles coming up. I mean, there were a lot of vehicles looked at, but traditionally. When we have the water department uses that van, that van was budgeted at over a hundred thousand dollars. I think it was 115. And we looked at and said, how often do you use that van? We've had it for 30 years. How often do you actually use that van? And it was. Five times a year, maybe during a water main break. So we said, okay, instead of buying a replacement, yes, we've used it for 30 years, but how can we? Get a better value for it. That hundred thousand dollars for that, um, enclosed truck. We would have budgeted 70,000 for a utility truck anyways, for the new employee. So basically we, we minus one fifteen and just added 30,000 back in. Saving $85,000 by just streamlining the way we're going to do it in the future. And as Jason said, I think it's 20 or 30,000 to retrofit one of our existing trucks. So then you could essentially. So then you could essentially do everything that fit in that van, we're going to try to fit into two plumbers trucks. And then have two regular utility trucks, and if there's a break, someone just has to bring out the truck that actually has the enclosure on it.
Okay, so just to finish up here, uh, the draft budget will be completing that over the next two weeks. Um, it'll be presented at committee, the whole meeting in two weeks, March twentieth, so. Probably that week before, we'll send out the final PDF document, post it on the village's website for the public to look at, um, and just have that final read. Uh, document ready, um, and then then those April committee, the whole meetings, we'll we'll bring back some addition to the budget on the uh. On the agenda, just if there's been any changes, updates uh to things that that have gone and update the board on there. Um, we'll have that uh public hearing in April and then hopefully bring the budget back come May first uh for the final vote.
Very good. Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Most adjourned.
So moved, second.
Own favor, say hi.
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 Good night.